Says four thirty, call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
President.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here. George.
Please bow your heads. Most gracious heavenly father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We ask father for continued blessings and safety for our armed forces. Serving overseas and at home. We also ask for blessings and safety upon our first responders, father. And this time of year, father, it's time to get to get the seed in the ground and we just pray that you would be. Your weather would be conducive to do that and the farmers would all stay safe and have a bountiful for. Bountiful crop. Pray all these things in your son's precious soul. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
For the flag allegiance. Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's. Uh, we want. Right at the beginning, we want to do a resolution for Steve Stallman. Under new business. No more additions or deletions.
Agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda. Motion by George, support by Steve, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Brief public comment. Okay. Incideration of the consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Tim to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By Bosnay. Administrators report.
All right. Um, just a real quick, uh. Update, I'm going to give some clarification on the Gresham County Herald article that hit last week that discussed our audit. And our personnel. Uh, and administration. Um, yeah, I feel like a little context, adding a little context so that it could go a long way to relieve some angst that I've heard from some of the commissioners and then possibly some of you constituents. One of the items that it highlighted was there was adjustments that were made to approximately two hundred and forty accounts uh in our financial statements. Um, we have, like I said, over two thousand accounts there, um. When Ally was here, she she said that uh that related mostly to a wage accrual. And I wanted to explain to you what a wage accrual was. At the end of the fiscal year, when we have a payroll period, a certain number of those days apply to one year and a certain number of those days apply to another year. Uh, we are required to wait until that payroll hits our books. Then we pull back everything that is related to the prior year into the prior year, we do that manually. Um, and the audit firm actually underestimated, understated how many accounts just that one specific entry hits. Cause that one hits two hundred and ninety of them. Um. And and what happened was. Last year, we also gave uh two of our unions a, I believe it was a two point five percent, one point five percent. Pay out as part of their rate raise for that year. That hit our books right as the fiscal year turned before the payroll hit. So when Becky and I did our calculation of pulling this back and as the approval part, it included this one point five percent payout also. So it was off just a little bit and caused those two hundred and ninety accounts to be off by a percentage of what the uh performance based pay was. Uh, that was. Part of their union negotiations. Um, it also discussed several significant transfers from the general fund to various departments. Um, you know, what it did not say is those transfers are performed every year and those transfers were approved in the budget by you and were within budget. Um, and it also mentioned that there were two tardy audit reports, but in fact, there wasn't one. The audit. That was in question was was turned into this. If you have any other questions, you're free to ask me those now or in in my office, I just wanted to clarify a few things that were stated.
I do have a question.
Mm hmm.
Um, my concerns are, um. Uh, we have a whole new set of people in that office. Um, are they going to school or are they getting kind of caught up a little bit? I understand that. That we need to still keep this lady on that's been able to um work on our. Our audit or make sure our audit sort of passes next time.
Which office?
Uh, the treasurer's office.
I believe the treasurer's office, I don't think they've had any turnover in a year and a half, right? Is a year and a half accurate?
Yeah. Well, I mean, since you've been on, since you've come on as a treasurer. Um, we haven't been able to pass the audit, but I understand too, you need to learn the job. Um, but now we've hired this lady to come in and help you, is she still on the books? For consulting, but we have, it was just the first audit and that was a lot of cleaning. If you'd like to come up and visit with me, I would. Yeah, but I mean, we never, I've been on the board twenty four years, we've never had a problem with the audit. Until that first year that you've been on the board.
Oh, I beg to differ with you, Jan.
Well, I'd like you to show it to me, just pull it up, I can.
Pull it up.
All the audits.
Hmm.
I've been here twenty four years, every.
There was one in that office ever since I've been on this board.
I'd like to say we've we've never failed an audit, we've always.
We never failed an audit until.
Never failed an audit, we've had material findings, but never have failed an audit.
Well, I shouldn't say fail, we had to hire someone to come in and help, you had to have, you all know the one year, two thousand. The second year, they came in and helped you get, you know, get it around. And then you hired this other lady from a company, I know about it, because I know Ally and she told me about it, that she was recommending this company to come in and help you to get things straightened around. And that would have been last year. And again, it took. A year to get that straightened out, so now.
What is the question that we can answer for you?
Okay, I just wonder, are she still on the books? I mean, are we still hiring her to come in and help you?
On a project base. She's not in there to work on.
Is she, is she still coming in to help? How much are we paying her each year? How much did we pay her last year? Cause my understanding was forty five thousand.
Once we move on to where I'm at. Part of the conversation, I can look that up for you.
Okay, I just want to know, is she still going to be with us and are we still paying her and how much?
We can address that in the finance meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
By then I can pull some information on that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, back to the article, um, you know, what it, what it did not mention. Was how healthy uh our financial status is here at this county, um. We again put money in the bank and at the end of the year, uh, our projects were in exceptional shape. And our liabilities were are continuing to decrease, um, except for a blip in the market where our pension fund measurements dropped a little bit. So I I did want to just. Remind everybody that there was a lot of positive news that came out of that audit that did not get reported um to the public, I, so. Well, I only did recommend additional assistance in our finance department, I, uh. That is something that I've heard from a couple of commissioners. Even before this report came out, that that was something that they would like to discuss further also, so. Any other comments? Uh, update on personnel, uh, this week we have partnered with Elma and Ithaca High Schools to hold open interviews on their campuses. Uh, to recruit park rangers for our summer employment program. Uh, we received some. Applications from both of those schools and the applicants, uh. Expressed to us, they had concerns about getting to interviews during open business hours because. They have uh school and then they have sports after school. Uh, so we called up the schools and they agreed to host us during school hours and they even made announcements that if. Additional students would like to come down to for these um interviews, that they will make that available to them, so. Uh, John Rayburn, our parks, our new parks director, uh, he's scheduled this, uh, Stephanie. House in uh payroll, uh, HR, she will be assisting also, so very excited about that. Uh, we hope that it will start a relationship uh directly from the schools to the county uh for the future. Uh, we have an upcoming staff training session that will be mandatory for our staff, we're making that available for our commissioners also. Um, Sheila has created a signup sheet for you. Um, what this is going to cover, uh, the topics is going to be our commitment to a common goal. Uh, effective communication, resourcefulness, respect and empathy and accountability, um, so if you're able to make it, we look forward to seeing you there. Well, the past week, uh, both Sheila and I have held. Meetings related to the materials management program that we are working on putting together, uh, we met with Granger this week. Uh, I felt that that meeting went really well, they were able to express. Some of their, what they foresee as strengths of this uh coalition coming together and some of the things that they're afraid that could possibly come from. A large coalition of waste management plant like this coming together and. Uh, it was very good for both parties, I believe, um, we are. Our our next step with Granger is they're going to set up a meeting with Sheila and I to have us go through, uh. They're hoping to take us through both their Elma and Lansing. Uh, facilities to show us what what they offer for our community, um. I do plan to definitely make it to the Elma, I'm guessing Sheila will probably go to Lansing one solo, um, cause I know this is, the project is near and dear to her heart. Uh, last week she also met with the Central Michigan Coalition up in Isabella County. So we are. Tuning to work on that, a couple of items coming up on May second. Uh, a, I've had a couple of groups that are working together to put together. Uh, something on the courthouse yard lawn for the National Day of Prayer, that's something that has happened. Uh, one of, one of the events that uh the public has scheduled since I've started working here. Uh, they continued that nine thirty to twelve thirty, if anyone in the community is interested, May second is also. The annual Chamber of Commerce event, the uh. Uh, the heavy appetizers and, um. Awards uh that evening, and if you're interested in that and would like some more information, you can contact the chamber or myself or Sheila. And that concludes my administrator's report.
First, what was the times of the National Day of Prayer?
Uh, they scheduled it for nine thirty to twelve thirty. Um, I've had other. Yep, I've had other. Individuals in the community interested in working with them during those timeframes too. It's possible it changes if it expands or how with other parties involved.
I do have a question too, the, what we signed up for that, I need to see that date again, what was that? April twenty third?
Twenty third, twenty fourth, so.
Okay, um. Twenty third is, I, I got it wrong, but, and eight thirty, um, I, I guess I didn't catch it, are you going to have, we come in or do we have to do it online?
The training will be in person.
In person, okay, where's that at, yes?
Here.
Here.
George, what do you get to report on?
Well, um, it was.
Thank you.
Monday. Uh, let's see. The eighth. I went to uh Hamilton Township and they. Actually signed a contract to begin their construction of their. Uh, hall, township hall.
Wonderful.
That's good. Um, so they're all excited about that. And. And at every meeting I went to. This time of year. The township cemetery always to be right in front of everybody. The problem that we see is. With town, with with cemeteries all over. Is we, you have by law have perpetual care to that cemetery if you're a government entity. Like a township or a city. And that money is awful hard to come by. And they always have to take money out of their general fund to put in there, even though they have. Pay, pay money to have the lots sold, that's not anywhere near enough money to keep the cemetery in good shape. And so. Um, the phenomenon over the last few years is the older, the old guard who mowed and took care of all those. Township seminary, some cemeteries are retiring or. Checking out, they're not here anymore. And so there's a lot of. Professional. Lawn care people anymore. The problem is finding a good one that is. Pays attention to what you're trying to get done and to your standards in your cemetery. And so that's always seems to be at the forefront at this time of year, they always talk about it. They're, they, they get bids. All over the map of what people do, um. And so that I'm just, I just put that out there because that's a common thread through all, all, all the meetings I go to. Um. And I went to North Star. And they're struggling with some blight issues in their. In their uh community, uh. Permits department is well aware of it, we need to get some. Uh, verbiage done on our, on our blight. Policies so that we can move forward with the, with that and do a little better job in that, in that area. Um. Tuesday night, I went to Hamilton Township. Um. They, they also are looking at. Uh, renewing their. Modernizing their township hall, not, not a new one, but re-modern, re, just some makeup and do some bathrooms and fix some things up there. Um. Go, I'm going to go back to North Star. Uh, North Star, uh. They're struggling with their. With their ARPA money. They're trying to come up with some good projects. And one of the things they found is, if, if you, any of you have been through North Star lately, it's. It's rough, okay, and we, and we have a lot of communities around that are that way, because there isn't any money and then people don't, can't fix things up. But they offered uh four or five different properties within the community to buy those properties. And. Take the houses out because they're just boarded up. And they haven't had anybody that were willing to sell. I don't know that, I, I don't know that phenomenon, but. If I had somebody, if I had a piece of property and somebody willing to take it off my hands, I'd be jumping at it, but that's me, um. So back to Hamilton Township, uh, like I say, they're, they're, they're looking at fixing up. Uh, and doing some things uh around uh. Their township hall and uh obviously back to the cemetery again, um. And then Wheeler Township. Um. They, and I, and I found this out that there's a, a, a internet company called LakeNet. And LakeNet has sent them a letter. Indicating that they're going to come, they want some easements coming down forty six. Going through Wheeler Township. They're going to set up a link. It's an internet company that's. Based out of Saginaw. And they've got permission from the state of Michigan now to come into Gresham County anyways. And they're going to come in through there and they're going to come in through Hamilton Township. So. And that's, uh. The thirty five thousand dollar view of that, thanks. That's it.
Tim.
Well, I went to Emerson Township April eighth one day. And, uh. To uh repeat what George said. They talk a lot about cemetery, they have two cemeteries, they, the, the one I know is on Tyler Road. Uh, in fact, there is a young man that was in the bid to take care of the. Cemetery, but they've got this. Guy Corey who wants. To get out of it, but he's willing to. Do it until they get somebody to do it. Trees need trimming and. And they talked about a pine tree along the fence. Uh. I think every township's a different, uh, Emerson Township, we have a meeting in a little room. The rectangle. Table. Where the uh township uh people. Sit at and I, I sit outside of the table, it's kind of neat, it's. The, um. Chair Jamie though, uh. He was late or he didn't show up, I, I left later on, so I, I don't know if he came or not. So then Tuesday, April ninth, I went to Elma City Commission Meeting. Uh, Mr. Ripley and I was really impressed. Uh, they're replacing, uh. They started replacing crease downtown. Renew treatment, uh. For water. Drinking plant, uh, they've got a government loan. Uh, they talked about farmer's market again at State Street. Ernest Cushman will hold an art fair. In the Scotland Yard Park on August third from seven AM to seven PM. Uh. They're working on Michigan Avenue, right, right in front of Avalon Tahoe, they're. Uh, fixing the roads, uh. They talked a lot about uh library things, Susan Hunter, the friend of the library, uh. There's an open house. Uh. Uh, April. April twenty fourth, an open house, three to six. It was well received, they had open house last year, uh, uh, free, uh. Hot dogs and. Probably something to drink with, with that. Um. They had a tour of the. I don't know if you ever heard of this tour of the cemetery where people that have long been deceased. There's actors that play them and. Uh, give a historical spiel. Uh. So they talked about that, one thing that I really found, uh, this lady. Susan Hunter said that Elma had Republic trucks. Early part of the twentieth century, I, I don't know like exactly when it was, it's probably after the Model T, which. Nineteen teens. Elma Republic trucks employed at its peak, two thousand people. And at the time, we were the fastest. Growing city in Michigan. So that, that gives the whole area, I think, a good manufacturing base, which. But, uh. And, um.
You have a hard time reading that guy's writing?
Yeah, well, I give that to. Yeah, I, I didn't listen to my second grade teacher, she said I held the pencil wrong, but I just, it's stubborn.
Steve.
Um, first of all, I want to apologize, it wasn't last, the first meeting of the month, I had a commitment with my wife in Grand Rapids that I was at, so, um. But by all accounts, because I didn't talk, you guys got out of here quicker, so.
Right.
Any of you were here, I guess it was a, it was, they were out of here and everybody was excited, so. I, I won't make up for it tonight, uh, so I'll, I won't talk about all the meetings I went to before that, this month been to Parenton Village, um, they are. Working on, um, there's a requirement by the state, they have to do, you know. Village the size they are, they have to have thirty random, a computer has to randomly, um. Grab thirty addresses, they have to check and make sure that there's no lead pipes. Um, so they're in the process of working on that and they were giving the contracts around with who they were going to have to hydro down to them so they can, because they have to not only inspect it at the. Where it comes through the wall in the home, but where it's at the street, um, where it's connected to the city's water supply, so they're in the process of working on that, um. And I went to New Haven and Newark, even though, uh, New Haven, um. When I was there, there were several questions and by the time I left New Haven to get to Newark. Um, the Newark meeting was over, so anyhow, um. But New Haven, they have some farmers that were there that have started to receive some letters of, um. With the whole uh state now having the authority to come in and. Um, they've taken the local control away and that whole vote that's supposed to be coming up, um, they're starting to have farmers receiving letters about solar. And about batter, solar battery storage facilities on their farms that they were wondering if I had. Heard anything and that was the first that I had heard of either one of those, um, happening again in Gresham County, because we just talked at the last meeting. About that there was no new proposed. Big scale solars, um. For solar, uh, in Washington and North Star Township. If you've taken the time to drive down Grant Road between and and see them, um. I think as a county, we need to do something with our townships and the county to make sure that our ordinances are. Tight and right and up to snuff, because if you look at the Washington Township side of the road. There's a certain kind of fence, if you look at the North Star side of the road, it's a different fence and to me, first two things that are being built on the same road at the same time. It, it looks like one's enacted under a mistake, um. And it's totally because of the ordinance involved with one township and the other township and. Whether you like the solars or you don't like the solars, when you're driving down the road and you're like. My wife's like, what in the world is going on, like this side is shorter, this side's taller, this side's got high tensile wood post, this side's, it, it just. It, it catches your attention and I've heard several people talk about it, so I think as a county, and I know Chris, you've talked about, um, working with Spicer Group or something to. I, I just think if we're going to do any more projects, we need to make them look so when you drive down the road, it, it doesn't like, you're not looking at both sides of the road going, what, what happened here? Especially going through there right now, knowing they're being built, it definitely is.
One problem we're always going to have though.
Hmm.
Washington Township does their own.
Yes.
And North Star is.
Is, is county, yeah, that's.
So you have, you have two different ways to, to go about it.
That's what I'm saying, we need to come up with some form of, that, that just, it looks ridiculous in my opinion.
They want to, they want to be independent.
Yeah.
You have to, you're the, you're the, you're the advisor down there, you're the representative.
You probably don't want to be in a county public meeting to tell you which side of the road I think looks better, so. Just tell you which one looks better, anyhow.
I was just going to ask you, what side did you like the best?
I think the township side looks better than the other, personally, but the high tensile with the wood post looks really sharp, but anyhow, that's, you asked, so I'll tell you, anyhow, um. Uh, then I, I made it late to Newark Township. By the time I got done with all the questions at New Haven, um, I was late to the Newark meeting, um, usually their meetings aren't done quite that fast, but. David, Dave was there to represent, um. Lieutenant Bozart was there, so they had plenty of people from the county to, to talk. And I missed Fulton Township's meeting last night because their meeting got changed because of the MTA. Which is later this month, because they're usually, and so I wasn't at the meeting, but I've been working with their supervisor on some, also some. I, I wouldn't really say it's blight issues, it's more things with the health department and so that has been. Actually went and did a little tour through the area, took some pictures for myself to give to the, to the health department with some concerning residents, I know you guys were with Fulton, I just want to let you know, they are. Working. On those addresses, so, okay, so anyhow, that's it.
And I hope nothing to report until next week. All my meetings are next week.
Oh, okay. I went to Seville and they weren't talking about it there, but uh. Invenergy is offering new leases to people in the township for wind. Uh. I guess they think the new law might pass and. Seville and Lincoln and. Isabella might be a possibility. I also went to Arcata. Newark, in Newark, they're, uh. Really fixing up one cemetery, they got a pretty generous benefactor there.
Oh.
And I went to Elma. And the main talk there was they got too many deer. And. Just a side comment on all of these. There's a lot of old people on the township boards.
Look around.
Don't you talk, please, why?
Well, most, most of them are younger than me, so. And that's all I got. New business. Uh, we want to do the resolution.
Yep, so.
Yep, so last week, uh we. We had a courthouse courthouse employee, friends and family, a memorial lunch for Steve Stallman. Uh Steve passed away a cou- a couple of weeks ago. Um he was a longtime employee, started here in nineteen ninety four. Uh he was just about to hit his uh thirty thirtieth year anniversary. Um Steve's son zoomed in to our appreciation celebration lunch for him. Uh it was just a wonderful moment. You know, the moment I walked into that room, I didn't feel like I was at work anymore. Uh just the the stories, the laughs, the the love for Steve, you know, he was a rock star. Not only inside the courthouse, but for many, many years outside the courthouse too, I grew up. Watching his band play um at all of the community events, it was a staple to see. Um Steve on the guitar, um so this resolution will be. Uh put together with um other certificates that were signed. By staff, by board members, donations that were collected. For his family, and this resolution will also be sent to his family. Um and we will also be retiring one of uh Steve's work uniforms to the attic of the courthouse. Resolution twenty four dash three nineteen honoring Steve Stallman's career at Gresham County. Whereas Steve Stallman since April thirteenth nineteen ninety four has worked for the Gresham County Board or Buildings and Grounds. And whereas Steve Stallman has patrolled the hallways and pathways of the Gresham County courthouse. All while being dependable and reliable, even under pressure, being supportive and respectful of coworkers and staff. Performing acts of kindness for others and refusing acknowledgement for himself. Making decisions based on integrity and honesty, offering service and supporting without hesitation. And whereas Steve Stallman was a wealth of knowledge for operations and history of our courthouse, and whereas. Steve Stallman passed away March twenty third, twenty twenty four, twenty one days before his thirtieth work anniversary. Now therefore be it resolved that all members of Gresham County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize Steve Stallman. And his commitments to the ideals of service to the residents of Gresham County.
Do you motion to accept that then?
I saw a move that we accept the um.
Resolution.
Resolution for Steve Stallman for results in years of service. With Gresham County uh Building and Grounds.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim to uh support the resolution honoring Steve Stallman, all those in favor, say aye. Or nay? Next up, tree removal, Tony.
My name's Tony Miller, I'm representing Buildings and Grounds. We've got um nine trees that we're looking at getting removed here on campus. There's uh some really dead looking pines out front, three on the left side, one on the right. There's a couple of trees on the front yard that we tried nursing back to health with no luck, they're too far gone. And then there's the three big pines on the backside of the building that are getting to a point where they could create a hazard. They're big enough, the way they were planted together, they're kinda leaning in a direction that we don't want them to go should should something happen. So we feel now would be a good time to get that done, the stump, the trees will be removed, the stumps will be grind, ground up. The stumps behind the jail get ground up. Um staff remove some small cedars there, but they're still little stumps that they're gonna grind out. I got two quotes, one for fifty one hundred from Gary Carmen, and uh the other one from Always There, they were fifty one fifty. Real close, only had to get to, we only had to solicit two bids because of ten thousand, that's part of our procurement. Process um regardless of the cost, I would recommend Carmen to do the job. He's been here at least a half a dozen times fixing our flag and taking care of dead limbs free of charge. Um he's done that to us at least six times that since I've been here, so.
Would you do Tony?
Yes. Yep.
I make the motion that we allow uh and give the bid to Carmen Trees to remove the nine trees for fifty one hundred dollars.
Moved by George, supported by Tim, to hire Carmen for a bid of fifty one hundred to remove the nine trees and. Grind out the stumps, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
We're replacing those, Tony.
What's that?
We plan on replacing those trees.
Yes, yes, um we'll talk about that once we get the yard cleaned up, we'll look into uh. I haven't researched it yet as far as what we wanna replace them with, but yeah, we'll definitely put something else in their place or close to it, so.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll get to call.
Parks and Rec recommendation.
Yeah, you know, I'm Sam Smith. I saw those court people walk in, I thought this can't be good. Um every year. I'm John Rayber, uh go ahead. Well, basically what happens is every year, this year they had a hundred thousand dollars to give away um in excess of the uh. Funding for the millage to be handed out throughout the county. We had about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in in applications applied for, we had a hundred to give away. Uh we met twice on it, I think, went through them, and you all have, you all have a copy of the paper with is there. So basically what we had recommended was to um. Give ten thousand dollars to Ashley. Excuse me, twelve thousand dollars to Ashley. They're gonna finish up a ball field parking lot type of thing there, and that'll clear up their whole park right there where the ball fields are. Um then Breckenridge. We wouldn't do anything there. We had Wheeler was gonna be uh twelve thousand dollars, we were gonna give them. And then Sumner uh was seventy seven fifty, they wanna put a play ship in their park. And where'd we go then? Which is the rest of it?
Yep.
And what was that number out? Oh yeah, seventy thousand two fifty would be the rest of it for Breckenridge in there facility. And uh they got a little ARP money from us, but we gave Elma quite a bit. A couple of times out of the ARP and unfunding last year, so we thought the rest of it should go to Breckenridge this year. And Steve was there at those meetings.
Well, I can, I can tell you a little bit about Breckenridge, they have a a nice little water spray thing for the kids there. But it's getting where it needs some tender loving care, and they wanna, they wanna upgrade it. Because there's a lot of people from around the county that actually go there and use that little water park, so.
Yeah, I I think their whole project was uh, Breckenridge whole project was. It was one seventy three or something.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh it's pretty cool, they had some drawings done, this'll probably take care of one side of it, you know, with some swings and stuff like that, and so. So we're gonna pay party, probably a third of it. So I guess we're just bringing that for a recommendation, but do you wanna do any questions?
Nice job. I wanna thank you guys for your work on it, John, you came in like. Yep, we were, you know, third hour already, you you, when you first started. And this thing was ongoing and you jumped in and and participated and um. I I just, I think it's a good thing, it was discussed, we'll have our next meeting tomorrow, but anyhow, um it was discussed. You know, the the nice thing about it is there's money going to multiple areas of the county, this, this is a county. Um millage, the the funds come in from everybody around the county, and they're spreading those funds out, um I think we're gonna. You know, we was a two hundred and thirty thousand, two forty you said, two forty that that those requests came in, I don't think that's gonna go down, I think we're gonna see that continue. And as we, as the Parks Board, you know, decides to spread them funds around the county, I think you're gonna see more and more of that. Um people requesting these funds in the future, um because as we've talked about. Um a lot of these communities don't have the money to 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 do improvements to their parks, so this is a big thing for them and and. Very much everybody will be super excited where the money is going, so. Unless there's more discussion, I saw a move that we approved the Parks and Rec uh recommendation from their committee.
Yeah, I'll do the sign the contracts then.
Yes, yep, to sign the contract so that they can disperse the the hundred thousand dollars as they. Uh elected twelve, twelve seventy seven hundred and seven thousand two fifty.
My understanding with that too, Chris, is just like we did with the ARP money, they gotta submit the bill to you refund them.
Yes.
Hey, uh moved by Steve, supported by Jan to. Go with the Parks and Recreation recommendation, all those in favor, say aye.
Just one other thing, we had talked about, this money comes from taxpayers. And when you go to a hub show park and you go to the other parks that the county sponsors, pretty much manages them and and takes care of everything, there's not a sign out there that says where this park is funded. So we're gonna start working on some signage, and so this boat that's gonna go to Sumner. Part of the deal is gonna be, we wanna sign it says, this thing was funded by Gresham County taxpayers. Really wanna let people know where this stuff comes from, um because the money comes from millage that's taken in from the parks. So and we're gonna put something, we think we ought to have someone at a hub show in Reed and down in uh Pompey. Just to, just to let people know where the funds come from, but.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so um we're gonna be working on that, I don't know, we'll have to bring it back to you, whatever, but just some verbiage that John's working on. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, good night.
Next up, equalization report.
Alright, so tonight I have the two thousand twenty four equalization report. Uh so what I did is I put together um a PowerPoint presentation just to basically help navigate the equalization report. There's a lot of information down there, so this is kind of an attempt to simplify it and make it easier to walk through. So starting off, the equalization department is Jamie, who is our equalization appraiser, and myself. So I guess before I get into uh the equalization report, I figured I should um. Give a little explanation of what equalization is, because that's something we get fairly often. Uh by definition, equalization is the process of guaranteeing that properties are assessed at fifty percent of market value as required. By section three of the Michigan Constitution. So the primary function of the equalization department is ensuring that assessments are fair and equitable across the county. And uh if anybody has any interest of exactly what all goes into that process, I'd be more than happy to put together some sort of presentation to bring. Back before the board um of the different reports, different practices that go into that, or if anyone has any questions now, I'm more than happy to answer those. Uh but moving along. The Gresham County Equalization Department has completed its review of the two thousand twenty four assessment rolls of the sixteen townships in three cities of Gresham County. The two thousand twenty four Gresham County Equalization Report, prepared by the Gresham County Equalization Department, is submitted for approval and adoption. Um then that letter just goes on to list the uh county equalized value for two thousand twenty four, it's a big number, so I'll let you read that and I won't. Go through each of those. Uh the next slide here breaks down the uh recommended county equalized values into the different classes of property. The uh next slide here is a summary of the change in uh value from last year to this year. So as you can see up there, uh we had quite an increase in both the assessed value and taxable value. From two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, with a uh record breaking seventeen point five one percent in assessed value. Which I believe is the biggest increase the county's ever had.
Why is that?
Uh that is pretty much um almost entirely due to the uh industrial personal property class. And that would be the new wind turbines and the new uh solar farms. Um the uh agricultural and residential. Uh class has also received uh quite an increase, and those are more due to the market trends. Um land values are increasing, uh and the residential class just continues to, value just continued to rise, basically.
Oh, let me make sure I get this, so if we have wind turbines on one farm. Does everybody else pay the extra taxes too, or?
A wind turbine is classified as industrial personal property and taxes are paid, yeah, by the wind uh. Um company, or the energy company, so it would be considered like a building on leased land, basically.
Oh, I see, okay.
Under, does our taxes go up?
Uh so the taxable value is still capped at the five percent, so uh it is uh. I believe the inflation rate multiplier set by the Michigan State Tax Commission was five uh something, so they hit that cap again, so. Taxable values did increase by five percent, which is a lot.
How many times has that happened, has it happened the last four years as well?
Last year it increased by five percent, that was the highest, it's uh, or is that the first time it's ever hit five percent? Um the year before that, I'd have to look to get the exact uh number, I believe it was. Um.
It was like it was three.
Something like that, maybe three point seven, um I I can look and get the exact number.
Somebody in my township, theirs, they said theirs has gone up four years in a row, so they finally went to the the township. And um kinda late, because it's gone up quite high.
Yeah, it's uh just, the inflation rate multiplier has gone up and up for the last uh few years, so they just keep being increased. By a higher number, and now that cap has been hit up five percent, so um hopefully it won't continue that way, but.
That's because the land too is worth more money, right?
Uh yeah, so the uh the assessed value is fifty percent of what the market value is, and then the taxable value is based on what that cap value. It's uh so the assessed value is increasing because that's what market trends are. Uh what's what's happening in the markets, values are increasing, um and then the taxable value on that side. Uh the five percent is due to that uh rate of inflation multiplier, and anything beside. Beyond five percent in the taxable value is due to uh new property um uncapping, so properties being sold. Uh buildings being added, things like that.
It's, let me ask you one more question, so if somebody's paying, say, five thousand dollars. Last year because of taxes going up, how much more are they gonna pay this year for the same thing?
Uh their taxable value will increase by another five percent. So whatever the taxable value was for two thousand twenty three, times five percent, unless they've added new property, something like that. Uh.
Uh you can't do like five percent on five thousand, you'd have to do it on the property value, right?
Yes, on the taxable value. So uh to kind of break down where a lot of that new value is coming from. Uh I put together this slide of showing how many turbines in each township, and if there's a solar farm. And the uh value that was associated with that project. Um in Washington, it says J B O R, meaning that those values are gonna be going on at the July Board of Review.
I'm gonna back you up just for a second, Keegan. So. The five percent cap on real estate taxable value, do we see, is. Are other counties seeing that too, or specific to Gresham?
Uh whole state.
That's, so that's not something that Gresham County is doing, that is the real estate market.
Yeah, yeah, so um the the Michigan State Tax Commission does their study on the rate of inflation, and then they create the inflation rate multiplier. Um they call BSNA software, which is the software we use, and then BSNA software hardcodes it into their database. So it is put onto every single property across the state.
So it doesn't matter if we live in metro Detroit or if we live in Gresham County. That is the standard that they set that property. Value is going up.
Yeah, that is exactly right.
You're not raising our millage rates, that's what, that's not what's causing.
There is no way around it whatsoever.
Oh, and I just said it, so will the millages go up also?
Uh so I will be bringing back the um uh general operating millage uh in the first meeting in May. Um but that uh what the millage rate is set by Board of Commissioners, so uh I apply whatever the Board agrees on. Uh is there any questions on uh this slide?
Just find it interesting, the differences in value when you look at the turbines.
Hmm.
Um per turbine, the value versus, you know, what a small footprint, yeah, they take up up a footprint, but. If you've driven by any solar farms, it's the whole farm.
Yeah, and those are uh.
Eighty, hundred, hundred and sixty, five hundred, six hundred acres. that are, you know, and when you look at the value of the actual taxable, the value of them, the turbines are uh we're definitely getting more um tax taxable revenue from them versus the solar.
Yeah, and uh the solar right now are considered in progress, so that's not the full value of them, uh so. And when a um a personal property project like that is in uh progress, they are fifty percent of the true cash value, and then they get an additional fifty percent multiplier for uh being in progress. So um for like the Washington and North Star uh project, I believe they filed their um in-progress report at fifty million, uh and then split between the two, twenty-five each, and then they got that additional uh fifty percent multiplier, so that's where you see the twelve million seven, so um.
Um. Depreciation value on those. I mean, we talk about it with the turbines all the time, that's a concern everyone has, and so the the leases on the solar are thirty-year lease, correct?
Uh I do not know, actually. I'm uh pretty new to the solar farm, so that's something I'm still uh wrapping my head around, learning the depreciation tables, things like that.
I'm just, so you're not one hundred percent sure the depreciation, like there's a hard gap on the on the turbines. They they start here, they depreciate fairly quickly for twelve years, right? And then they, then they.
It 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 graduated scale.
Yep, and then.
All the way down to the last bit is one, about one-third of the total value.
And then it's that, and then it remains.
So they reach.
Is the solar the same?
Uh it did, yeah, it'll be on a similar depreciation table, exactly as to what the depreciation table is or how many years until it hits that basically thirty percent. Um I I'm not sure of that, but I can find that out. The table that's using.
Curious on it, because
Yeah.
it'll be interesting as we, as all these solar farms become, you know, finished.
Yeah.
At full taxable value.
You gotta remember, Steve, once they get down that low,
Hmm.
it's the norm for them to repower. Once they repower,
Oh, absolutely.
value goes back.
Your turbines are definitely, because they're already talking about that, because we're coming, you know, we're nearing the, we got.
We've got, we've got some people.
That's why I was wondering on.
Powering right now.
That's why I was wondering on the length of the time with a solar, if it's thirty versus the turbines are about twenty years, twenty-five. So just curiosity for as we
Yeah.
project for the future. If I get lucky enough to stay on the board long enough, I'd like to know that there's revenue coming down the railroad tracks.
Absolutely. Yep, I can definitely find that out.
Oh, I have to ask another question. So um you have, say, Mr. Jones has got three wind turbines. How do they get paid? Does does D E T send us a check or do they? They do?
Yeah, they get a tax bill and then they pay.
And then they pay us. And they don't pay, they don't pay the farmer, and the farmer pays the um township?
Hmm.
Is that how it works?
Uh as far as what's a like a lease agreement on the land, that's something I'm not familiar with. Um we deal just with what they're uh the value of the turbine is. Uh basically, as far as any agreements that they have beyond that, I'm not sure.
And that payment goes directly to the township, then the township remits that to the county.
Yes. Okay, so the uh next slide be page twelve of the report, and this is just a breakdown of the uh classes of property in Gresham County. As you can see on there, the value is still uh primarily agricultural, but with uh the residential classes creeping up on that uh at uh thirty-three percent. These are the value trends since two thousand eight. And you can see really from the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four year. Took a big jump. Uh so this is the taxable value broken down in terms of what the uh millages will uh generate. This is just an estimation based off of two thousand twenty-three uh millage rates. Um but it is a uh basically a sixteen percent increase in uh generated revenue from the millages. So on uh pages sixteen through thirty-four, this is just uh basically another way of showing the information that's covered earlier in the report, broken down by township. Uh so you can see each township, their taxable value, their assessed value with the previous year's values, and then um Newark and New Haven showed the largest increases in value, but this is again due to that personal property. The last portion of the report uh is a report called the L forty twenty-four. Uh this is the report that shows the recommended county equalized valuations, and this is the report that gets signed by the Board, and then we submit this to the tax uh State Tax Commission to show that uh county equalization has been completed. I believe that is everything I have. In that, um are there any more questions or anything uh anyone wants to go over a little more if I went too fast there?
Like Keegan. The last meeting in March, I know that uh Chris had contacted you. Um because the first meeting in March, George had asked for projections of five and ten-year
Hmm.
projections. There wasn't any data out there on ten, you gave data on five, and I guess just, you know, we have, this is the largest crowd we've had since I've been on the commission, I guess, just so um from what I remember of that, the trend, there is no barring some catastrophe that we don't know is coming, um the trend is for an upward tick.
Yeah, it looks uh like most uh predictions call for uh a steady increase, um not like what we've seen.
This year.
Percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, increases. Um I think, was it uh around two, three percent? I don't, I think if I remember correctly, the next.
I think it's in one and two point five.
Yeah, what they're predicting for the next few years, so so still a steady increase, but nothing, um I didn't, I didn't see much predicting huge crash or anything like that um already here or a huge increase, so.
Um some other big projects that are in our area, I know that there's um like Z F S is part of the Renaissance Zone out there, right, that?
Yeah, I believe so.
That's been, what, five, six years that's been there now?
That was a fifteen-year.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
No, I'm sorry, it was eighteen years.
Okay, I knew there was a length of thirteen years, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a ways to go yet, like another ten or twelve.
Okay. I knew that there was a a timeframe in there, and they've actually added to it now, you know, four big bands.
You've got to remember, those entities still pay millages.
Yes. Yeah, I.
You don't pay the county tax.
Yeah.
They pay millages.
Yeah, I I understand that, I'm just saying.
A lot, a lot already.
That's another very large um you know.
Well, the G F S has more S E B in the city of Ithaca.
Mm hmm.
So that's a big figure.
That's it, that's what I'm saying, there's some I guess bright spots on the horizon, you know, as we, as we continue to move forward, and if they can repower these um turbines and and what have you, I mean, I think there's some definite bright spots in our future for
Yeah, absolutely.
stuff to continue to.
And um with uh the uh like, for example, the residential class, I think the increase in um taxable value was at nine percent. That's four percent beyond the um inflation increases. That four percent is from properties selling, people building new houses, people adding on buildings, things like that. So yeah, so definitely that's things in um, that's what I'm looking for. Uh things are going good.
Yeah.
When we projected our numbers, we did not incorporate any type of additions.
Hmm.
We just projected what our basis now, what should it look like?
As we continue to move forward, yep.
We didn't plug in anything that we might get, only plugged in what we.
What we have, exactly.
We do, we only deal in reality.
Yep.
Is there any other uh questions or concerns or anything like that with the report?
Need a motion?
Yeah, yep.
To receive the report?
Yeah, and approve basically the county equalized values.
Uh some more? Support?
By Steve, by George, supported by Steve, to approve with the county equalization report. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Do you need, hear me next month?
Alright.
Do you need a signature, Keegan?
What's that?
Do you need a signature?
On that last uh report, the forty twenty-four, that'll be the signature page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, reclassification in the District Court.
So for the the better part of my administrative career, uh District Court has been moving towards and and hoping to create, change a position within their courtroom. Um two years ago, they they did a re- reclass for the majority of their office, and they found a need to create a a chief de- deputy clerk position. And typically, when a a department comes to me with a request like this, uh I'll go through and I'll kind of test the waters on the commissioners individually to see how how we should approach this, when we should uh do this, bring it towards the Board. And at the time, when when this was brought to me, we were then pursuing uh this wage compensation study. So the feedback that I got when I would talk to some of you individually would be, well, maybe we should wait for the study, maybe we should see what comes out of this study. Um so we've gotten closer and closer uh to either approving or disapproving the study with this request on my desk for a chief deputy clerk position within District Court. So I I I was advised that maybe now, before we do look at the class study, that it would be a good time to bring to this Board, whether or not you would accept reclassifying a clerk to a chief deputy clerk. Uh now, this chief deputy clerk would be in charge of uh overseeing the other clerks in the department. Uh we have a lot of magistrate work that is performed in our District Court, and it's where our District Court Administrator is seeing um individual residents uh that are not going before the judge, but they're rather going before him, uh which is leaving a vacancy in the office that can be filled by uh what we're hoping would be another leadership role, which would be the uh chief deputy clerk. Now, I have included this position in the wage study information, so if you would like to prefer or refer to what the information looks like uh financially, it is in the next couple pages under District Court, under Chief Deputy Clerk.
Right, look at it.
You looked at it. Very good, I appreciate that. So uh if you have any questions for myself, for the judge, the District Court Administrator, we are available.
I guess I want to just, you know, it it states right in here, most of the counties have this position, correct? So we we've actually kind of went without for quite some time. Um and if any of you've been in the District Court, it's a busy place. There's stuff happening. It's clicking all the time, and if you've ever had the opportunity to go through their after hours, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, they're working all day long. Like I said, it's clicking, it's like there's a constant busyness. But a lot of times that busy, they're so busy, they can't even get it all done. So I mean, I I think it is a position that maybe having a leadership role that can be available when, you know, there's other things going on, magistrate duties have to happen, because there's questions that come up. When you're that busy and doing that kind of pro- amount of processing of paperwork and and court cases and things that go through there, I really think that we need, it's twenty twenty-four, we need that supervisory, my personal opinion is we need this in Gresham County. We need this in our District Court to have that other supervisory role there when um a question is arises. I mean, if the magistrate's on the bench, if the judge's on the bench, can't wait all the time to have questions answered, it would be sure nice to have that position there, someone who can take that role, answer that question, and and get people on their way. Um one of the, you know, you hear if people complain about something, it's they had to wait too long, you know what I mean? People are busy. I think we want to, we want to best serve our citizens and our employees is to have one of these positions. Personally, that's my opinion.
Which name is the one that's gonna be taking District Court that you want to move there? What's the last name?
This position, it's not about the person.
Oh, I thought I talked to Charlie today.
He's trying to create a position though.
Yeah.
So there's a medical sense in it, it's about a position.
It it would, it would be open within the court organization, ultimately, if you have a charter to fill that, but if somebody else had the qualifications, it could be more.
That's just one person that would be taking that position.
It would be, it would be the internal personnel, it wouldn't be added staff. Not adding any staff.
You actually want to eliminate a regular clerk's position and create a deputy or a chief clerk's position, right?
When, under the District Court, the reason I asked that question is that there was three people that we um that I, I took the time to um see exactly um what they were making and what they would be thinking. So I just wondered if it was one of these people here, but it's probably not.
Well, so.
Position. One of the clerks, one of the clerk positions, we have with our court clerk, we have eight clerks, eight clerks in the District Court.
It's simply out here.
We want to make one of those and create a chief clerk.
The clerk of the court is by statute. The chief deputy would be the chief deputy of the court of the court. It would be like like Angie's the clerk of a certain court, she has a chief deputy. I I look down, the count of clerk has correct me if I'm wrong, four employees
Yes.
and a chief deputy. The rank commissioner has four employees and a chief deputy. Registered stewardess, three employees and a chief deputy. Traitor, three employees and a chief deputy. Proven court, three employees and a chief deputy. We have you know, without me, we have ten employees upstairs and another eight downstairs, so uh eight, seven, sorry, seventeen. But upstairs in the business office and the principal court operations would be uh eight clerks. So we're asking, one of those representatives' positions be reclassified.
And what, what grade level we look now?
Um, that grade level goes to the G seven.
Seven.
And it would be step three, seven, right?
It would depend on the number of years of service
Yeah.
of person that would fill it.
We have a motion to approve the reclassification.
I saw move that we create a chief clerk's position in the Gresham County District Court, and in the process of doing so, eliminate a clerk's position moving forward.
Support that.
Would just like to say that I did make, I I did make an error when I wrote this up, it should be chief deputy.
Okay, chief deputy clerk's position, sir.
We'll eliminate that clerk's position.
The darn word deputy, missing.
Should be broiled in your brain.
Yeah. I just was doing what you said.
Moved by Steve, seconded by George, to approve the reclassification of the District Courts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was nay? Motion carried. Step to the wage study.
One memorandum that I have included in the packet, uh basically what I have done, I have uh summarized the last four meetings where Sheila and myself have presented to you. Uh not only the wage study, but also the 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 financial aspects of it, when it relates to the county being able to pay for this. Um before we get into it, I I would like to say that the amount of work that this Board has put into um this compensation study and this project is, is far exceeds any amount of attention that I have seen uh Board members put into any project since I have been here. Um so for that, I I do applaud you. Uh the last three weeks alone, I think Sheila and I have probably spent around sixty hours uh with you individually in our offices or on the phone, talking about this, having questions. Um so I I just, I just want everybody to know that this Board has really taken this project seriously.
So um the last time I was at your office was last week. So I was the only person that had been in there, so all these people came in after I was there.
It's talking about.
Okay. But I didn't know, I've talked, anyway, I um I went in and got some paperwork from her, and I sat down and. and I sat down and I was, I'm missing one sheet that, yeah. I meant to get this last sheet covered. I've been working on this about forty hours since I picked up some paperwork from you, Sheila. And when I, when I started doing the numbers, what I did is I took, well, the administration office, I put down how much they were making and what grade, what step they were at and what grade they would go to, and the difference, how much they would make. And then from there, I think times it by forty, times it by fifty-two, and I thought, this is not too bad. But then when I got into, we would be giving eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollar raise. I thought, I don't know, this is not, this is not a good thing. Also, what I did do, which was starting yesterday, I went through and calculated how much all these raises would come. I did not include Commission on Aging, they have a board, they're a millage, and that, they come to us when they want to raise their their wages. We don't raise it for them. First of all, we don't know what, if they're working part-time, full-time, and, and how many hours a week and all this, it's a little different with Commission on Aging, and we have never, since I've been on the board, that's a long time, have ever went in and made those connections or that made those difference in their paycheck. The other one was parks, I took them off, and I took Commission on Aging off. If we give raises to just the ones that I have here, it comes out to six, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And the current raises that we were giving were, what it would add up to is two million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, I don't know how to even say this, two million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, hundred thousand, it would be six hundred and fifty-one thousand. So it's going to be an increase of almost two and a half million dollars. And there was eighty people on here, so if you take off Commission on Aging, well, on that page, fifteen, it would be fifteen off of eighty. So it'd be sixty-five people.
Well, I would just like to point out that I have included the calculation for every position in the packet for you within Excel using formulas. Not going to show you, if this were to pass, the total would be four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, it would not be two point three.
Well, I know you showed those to me, but the problem was, you said, when I asked you the difference, you said you didn't include social security or the 401. I didn't.
That isn't here.
It did.
Sixty and fifty-one for social security.
Yeah, I knew that, yeah, that's what I, that's what I figured. I'm just telling you that, that's why I'm giving everybody a sheet of paper here.
I mean, it's all clear, clear though, I mean, you can, you can audit my calculations. They are, they were, they were performed using formulas by individuals, not hiding anything.
I took mine to CPA to get out. Tom Cooper, I think you guys all know him real well. I went over to his house and he, because he was vice president of the commercial bank for twenty-one years, and so I was going to also get ahold of him again to help me some more, but a friend of his was dying of cancer within the next day or so. I also have another friend, Kevin Koe, who was with RESD, he's also CPA, both are CPAs. So I'm telling you, I went by their number, how they told me how to do this. So what we need to do is now.
Information stream.
What we, what we need to do is move forward.
No, we don't, we need to figure this out.
You're one commissioner.
I have the right.
To make a motion.
No, I'm not making a motion, I mean, I have questions. I can have, no, don't be a bully here. I can ask questions, we can take our time on this, we're talking a lot of money. And it's, and already, I think I have a right to ask questions and, and.
Figures, you've already started out with bogus figures.
Well, right here's Miami machine, I brought it.
See how you can get you have.
Figure it out.
Jan, I guess I'm confused as to how we came up with this two point five million, because I've looked at these numbers a lot.
I did too.
I've talked to Chris on the phone several hours, or me talking to Chris on the phone. Cell phone, call him, you know, morning, night, because I want to make sure that we're doing right thing, because I'm going to be the first one to say some of these numbers are startling to me. But you know why they're startling? Is Gracia County has been known to be not a well-paid county for what we compensate our workers. For as long as I've been an adult, I'll be honest with everyone in this room, it's why I left this county to go work somewhere else, was my second year as a deputy at Ingham County, I made more money than the sheriff made here. Now, I had to work a little overtime to get there, but I knew to live the dreams and aspirations that I had for myself and the, the, the things I wanted to do, it wasn't going to be possible making the deputy wage here. I don't like some of these numbers, in fact, I, you know, because once we set this, if this gets approved, this is legacy, this doesn't, that's why I wanted to talk to Keegan about tax dollars and what, what we have to look forward to. Because, but I also am sick and tired of the five years that I worked here, finding out yet another employee went to Clinton County. Why did they go there? Some of them were personal friends of mine. Why did they go there? Five dollars more an hour. Had that been a two dollar an hour difference, I don't know whether they'd have left, because they liked working here, they did a good job for us, they loved the fact that they were three blocks away from their school, the kids' school, or ten miles or whatever, depending on what school district they were in, but I don't blame them, I did the same exact thing. I drove ninety miles round trip so that I could live in the house I live in, own the land I live in, or that I own, because that's what I wanted to do. And I don't, quite frankly, I don't want our employees to be looking elsewhere. I don't want them to think, damn it, I can, if I go work for the state of Michigan, I can, yeah, the state of Michigan's going to pay more, Clinton County's going to pay more, they're not one of our comparables. These numbers, from everything I've read and from talking to Sheila and talking to Chris, everything that I have read, when we, when, when I wasn't on the board, when PayPoint was hired to do this job, the week, the Board of Commissioners, the five board members in 2022 decided they wanted this done. And I don't know what the, the math was, if it was a three to two or four to one, or I don't, it doesn't matter, it was a.
I wasn't there when it was.
So I, and it doesn't really matter, because it passed. So we went for it. We did the compensation stuff. The compensation study, and you can read whatever you want about a compensation study. Some people love them, some people hate them. You know, I'm not saying that I would take these numbers and, and, you know, I just, they do what they do, and they came back with these results in order for us to, and the comparables that, that they use are our comparables. It's like counties that have like, likable taxable value, populations, so they're dealing with the same amount of money. We are, some of these positions, quite frankly, it's embarrassing that we're, I don't like the numbers, because I, it's, it's, you know, you're talking about somebody getting a third more of their salary, but if that's what it takes to right the wrong of however long this has been, we as a Board of, a Board of Commissioners, we have to right this wrong and then move forward from here. We're already two years behind anyhow, this dad is 2022.
Let me ask you this, this paper that I was given, I'm going to pass it out to everybody in the courthouse and all my, all of the townships. If you feel confident enough that nobody's going to care and they're going to be willing to pay these taxes, so everybody can make this amount of money.
No one's raising taxes.
No, they're, well, yeah, you just said that they're going to be raising taxes again, this year, property tax.
I didn't say that, the equalization came in, that's what happened, the state of Michigan, you heard the state, the state tax tribunal, said we had to raise our rates five percent.
Okay, then why don't we take?
I have nothing to do, you can't change that, I can't change that, nobody in this room can change.
Question I got to ask you, okay, you guys just gave the deputies a raise, right?
Yes.
Yet they're still lower than Elma, right?
Because Elma's now, Dave, and if I understand right, Elma's now settled a contract and they got a raise.
Yeah, so we're now back underneath where Elma is, right?
Yes, that's something we'll be playing for a long time with the officers. You'll be chasing that tail for, I lived that for twenty-five years, wondering what MSU and Meridian and East Lansing and Lansing were making, and you're never going to, that's a constant revolution that, you can't get fixated on that. We gave them a nice raise, a nine and five, if I remember right, were the two raises that the deputies got, which is a substantial raise, I think the best they've ever had in a two-year contract that anybody could remember. So they got a great raise. So you're looking at these same kind of figures that multiple employees are going to get, and then in October, or not even October, here this summer, we're going to be going back into contract negotiations with these folks again. But we got to remember as a Board of Commissioners, this is 2022 numbers, and we're negotiating a contract for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. So in an essence, you're four years behind by the time you get to the end of that.
You know, you keep saying that we're always behind, but I'm going to tell you, I looked at, I asked the teachers, I worked, I work every day now, and I'm asking teachers, how much do you make? And they said fourteen dollars and ten cents, and we're lucky to get a one or two percent increase. And these people, these teachers have been there twenty years and still making fourteen dollars and some cents, and you talk about different places hiring for fourteen or fifteen dollars. Okay, I took a picture of it up, it was fourteen dollars an hour, but it says on the top, adults. You have to be an adult out of high school. So, I mean, and I look at, I might quit the school and go to work at Commission on Aging. I mean, I didn't put them in with this, but they're making, I got, I got cheats everywhere, let me look and see. I figured them out. Okay, the administration office, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents.
You begin.
Real simple, you take how much they're going to get and how much they had, you subtract that, two forty-nine, you times it by forty, then by fifty-two, they're going to get five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. That's not bad. What's bad is when you start seeing seven thousand, you see eleven thousand, they're going to get a, no, that was, I told you wrong, eleven hundred and, no, one thousand, one hundred and forty-four on that one. Just let me get across the Commission on Aging, I didn't do that. Okay, here's Circuit Court, five thousand, six thousand, eight thousand. Five thousand, eight thousand.
There's eleven people that'll get a raise over, over ten thousand dollars.
But that includes taxes.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the whole package, that's the whole package, but that's what it costs to come. So that's what I said, I'm not happy about these numbers, but I, I fully understand why we're where we are, because we have, this isn't something that happened overnight, this has happened over the course of a long period of time, that our wage scale has not kept up with our comparables.
You have someone in the administration office that's making, Becky Clark, making fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and she'll go to fifty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-two cents, and she's not here on Friday, she works at home. Now, sort of.
At home. There's nothing wrong with remote learning.
There is when other people want to work from home and they're not able to. That has been a complaint that's come to me several times.
Don't, just, you, you say generalities.
No, why do you?
You're talking, you're talking facts.
I'm, I am talking facts.
We're not.
Time on this. Here's another one, they get forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, they'll get a five, that is not bad, five thousand dollar raise. Here's, okay, forty-six thousand, eleven hundred and thirteen dollars, and they'll get a raise of eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, or sixty, I'm sorry, eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, eighty cents, that will come up to, they were making fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, now they're going to make, no, I'm sorry, they made forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirteen, and they'll go to fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, it's a huge jump. I, I think it's a huge jump. Here's another one, eight thousand dollars, they're going to make, they'll go from forty-one to forty-nine thousand. I'd like to, I would like you to tell me where you can work right now without working weekends, nights, or holidays, because in the court here, they get holidays off, they get weekends off, they get nights off.
And yet, for, working for the county, when you come to work for, I would like to think when, when we advertise for a position, whatever that position, whether it's from the most basic starting job to the chief deputy positions of one of our offices, when we have people apply for those jobs, I personally would like to think that they are applying to work for Gracia County not as a job, but as a career. This is a place they want to come to work because we pay, we have fair pay. We're not, you can take all these raises and then check all seven counties around us, and we're still not going to be, we're not going to be the top of any of that.
But we don't have the population either, right?
That's my point, we are being compared with Santa Lac, Cass, I can't remember all the, the names of the counties that we are, there are seven comparables that they use for everything we do. Trust me, I've called all the sheriffs, undersheriffs, and talked to them, had them ship me their contracts, because this became a full reality to me when I was the undersheriff, of just where we fall in the scale of things, that was from secretaries to deputies to, to everybody, so.
I do think that we have wonderful people that work here.
And I want them to stay here, I want them to stay here and retire, I want them to get this 401A money. I want them to get that, I want them to work here long enough that they feel like, and with a pay raise, I really hope that if all these pay raises happen for these people, they're obviously living their life right now, some of them are probably struggling to beat the band, but anyhow, I really.
So are your teachers who teach your children.
I was, I'm very, I'm very dear retired teacher, I don't want to hear about teachers.
And you.
My point is, my point is, I hope that these people will take this money invested in or part of it into their 457 that the county offers to them, so they can truly retire. So that they can truly retire one day, because that's what it's going to take. Right now, if you're living paycheck to paycheck and working here, and you have, you got a 401K, you ain't never retired on it, I don't care if.
Get money on one, they match the.
It's not going to happen.
Like if you have a county employee.
If you were hired today, you would give five percent.
Yep, you put in four, the county puts in five.
Yeah.
So that's.
So we still, so that's an extra five percent on there too.
Yes, and he has it calculated in here of what.
Calculated in here.
So I really truly believe this is our one chance as county commissioners to right a wrong that I have no idea how long it's taken to get here, but we're here, and these are the numbers, this is the company, we, we, I'm saying we, I wasn't on the board when it was decided. We as a board said we want to do a wage compensation. You did the wage compensation. These are the numbers that they're saying.
Who won't, who will not come and zoom on so we can ask questions? Because we have to pay them more money, we paid them thirty-five thousand dollars to do the study, but yet they never came to talk to us. And then now I want to ask them some questions, and we have to pay them more money, is that what you told me?
Yes, what we did, we, we worked with them.
They didn't call, and they don't answer the phone.
We worked with them through the end of our contract, and, and to continue their services, we would have to enter into a new contract.
Did you pay them during the time or after it was all done?
Three months.
Okay, so it's three installments.
No, you made four, you made one in one, two thousand twenty-one, two in two thousand twenty-two, and one in two thousand twenty-three. I was shocked when I found it. It totaled up to thirty-five thousand, but I wondered, but also when you call there, it says, please leave your name and number. So I did not have the time, because I was busy doing this, I was going to call the, you can call the Chamber of Commerce in that Maryland, in that county, and they will tell me information about that company, I plan on still doing that.
Why is it shocking that we paid four installments?
Well, it's just, I would think you would have waited till they were all done to do it, to pay them the money. And they would also, I don't know of anybody that we've ever had do a study that didn't get on the Zoom and zoom in and give us, ask the question.
While I agree with that, this has been going on for two years, and we, we didn't pay them to work with us for two years. We paid them to produce a report.
Why did it take, why did it take them two years?
They were done with their.
Previous station micromanaged the report to the point where we exhausted the amount of money that we had sent them for their services.
It would have been Tracy. or Sheila. Well, anyway, I, my concerns is this, is that I work with teachers every day, just about, and a lot of them are quitting, a lot of their pros are quitting. And you know, first of all, I feel that, I'm gonna tell you that I work, not because of the money, it's because of somebody that's needed me. I can't think of one job right now that I've ever went out to look for to get a job, because usually somebody will call me and say, Jan, what are you doing? And I'm working two jobs right, three, the county commission and two other jobs, because somebody needed extra help. I don't even ask how much you're gonna pay me, I just feel they needed help, I'm more than happy to help. But I also have a niece that my sister paid two hundred thousand dollars to put her through college to be a school teacher, and she quit about two, I'd be, this is her second year quitting, worked in Duran for thirty-one thousand a year, had thirty kids, third grade, thirty kids in that class, and quit because the parents always threatened her that she'd better do this or better do that, or they were gonna sue her, and so she just quit, now she works at home. So I'm just saying that we think that we don't pay very much, that's Shawassee County, by the way. Durant is Shaw.
What would you, with all the research that you did, what would you like to recommend this board does?
What I'd like to do, I think, I think some of these are okay, I think some of them, I don't think that we should be giving eleven thousand dollar raises. I think that's a little bit much, I mean, maybe.
Just to do our own compensation study and scrap this one?
No, I think just take it and we need, well, it's something we need to have a workshop, whatever, we used to have finance meetings, we used to have a whole, you come in here, that's all you did was finance.
But we did have a workshop, this, this, the board set up a workshop.
We said no, we set up to have somebody do this work for us, and then they sent it to us and we're ready to okay it and move on. We didn't do anything, we, the commissioners do very little today, from when I started, twenty-four years ago, we used to have a finance meeting, we used to do all this work, and we used to ask questions and do researches and stuff like that, now it's where you just rubber stamp it, and there's a problem.
I, I have a problem with, I, I spent a lot of time, hell of a lot more time than what I was led to believe, this, this position took, trust me.
Well, it used to be three meetings, now it's only two, so.
But the, the, when you look at the definition of what it means to be a county commissioner, what is our job? Our job is to hire or fire, you can call him a county administrator, county controller, whatever you wanna call it, you gotta have one of them, you gotta approve the budget, which if you did.
Do the budget, we used to have to do the budget.
Yeah, we have to not.
We have people who do the budget for us, because I'm gonna tell you, my degree was in catching bad guys and taking them to jail, not in doing a budget that was millions of dollars, okay? I, I run a family farm business, it is peanuts compared to the county's budget, and to set and approve policy.
Well, I.
That is our job as county commissioners. That is what, by state statute, that's what we are to do.
Well, you need.
When we approve policy, yes, do we approve the budget, yes, do we approve the amendments to the budget, if there are any, yes.
Which is this?
E- exactly. And you, board of commissioners, hired Chris Holster, and I have worked very hard to be in his office, call him on the phone, and I, I have to trust, you know, when, with these numbers, I can tell this was put into probably a Microsoft Excel spreadsheet to generate this, I use them myself for all kinds of things. I trust, I did not go through and do the math on every one of these lines, because I trust Microsoft Excel did this right. So we, this, the numbers came out, he read them to us, the general fund, we're talking three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty cents out of our general fund. There's a percentage that we work within for paying our staff. And it's usually from fifty-five to sixty-five percent.
Two, sixteen, six.
George, I bet it very wise.
Yes.
And if, uh, salaries don't exceed sixty-five percent of revenue.
You will.
I knew to him that fault one.
Okay, so you won't mind if I take this to a CPA or to one of the townships and have them go through it and if they're okay.
Take care of this tonight.
Document, we have this in here.
Public document. Uh, can I ask you, Jim, were you on this committee that, that was formed to, to look at that?
Yes, I was.
And so now today, you're bringing up all these questions?
The one we picked was in Florida, um, at the time, it was in, um, Tampa. Tampa, Florida was the one that we had picked, is what my, that's what I remembered.
You were on the, but it, that.
I'm telling you.
Regardless of that, you were on that committee, and you served on that committee, and you want, you, you, either you had time to ask questions, you got time to explore it all, so why today?
It was dropped, it wasn't today, it was dropped.
Been over two years we've been screwing around with this thing.
Oh, two thousand twelve, back when two thousand twenty or twenty-one is when we first was on that committee.
Hey, so it's been two years.
Papers, I still have the papers, and then it just kinda dropped from there, we never continued on. And so when I was in Florida, you guys brought it up and passed it, and, and that's okay, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is paying eleven thousand dollars to somebody, um, I mean, and then you have somebody else on there for getting forty-seven cents.
One more thing about, one more thing about teachers, they don't make a lot on the low end, but they have a good retirement, MEA is a great retirement plan, and they have insurance for the rest of their life pay.
They don't, she told me she didn't.
Well, then she's not vested.
First of all, if you guys know where Duran is, Duran would be like.
She wasn't vested, couldn't have been, you have to work ten years to be invested in, in your retirement.
She had eleven years then.
So I don't know what you're understanding, but I know my daughter is a school teacher, and I'm just telling you, the court is right, we get all the right information, and that's all I'm gonna say about it.
I'm just saying, I'm just telling you that, the, I think the biggest issue here is this, you're giving people in the courthouse, which I, I think everybody deserves raises, and that they need to be brought up to date on, on maybe in whatever insurances or a little bit more, uh, maybe more money in four oh ones or whatever. But the bottom line is that they don't work weekends, they don't work nights, and they don't work holidays, so they make pretty good money. And when you compare them next to the deputies, I don't care if it's here, or if it's in Ashley, or wherever you have deputies at, that are not even close to making what these guys are making, that work nights, weekends, holidays, and risk their life. If one of them gets shoot, gets shot, you know, what, what do they have left to give to their families? Do, do we have insurance that's gonna take care of their family the rest of their life? I don't think so, or at least I haven't heard about it.
Well, I think for tonight, at, at least, the first step is to determine if we're gonna accept or reject.
I would like to just give us another week, give us the next meeting, and go through by another's.
Put that in a motion.
I'd like to take and wait till the next full board meeting, and go through the numbers I had to see where the difference was, and willing to do, I'm willing to come in here and spend a couple of days.
I believe, looking at this, it looks like your total is the total salary, not the increase in salary.
No, this is the beginning where I started, do you have this? This was the beginning right here, what I did was I took the beginning, I took, here's their name, they had step three and they were going to step eight. They stayed twenty-one fifteen, they were going to twenty-three sixty-four, so you take and subtract those, it came to two twenty-nine.
Where is your two-point-five million dollar number at?
Oh, what I did is after I was done, I then took and started here, and I put how much more they were gonna make a year.
Can I just see the?
Yeah, this is.
I'll work backwards and I'll see what I see.
Okay, this, that's a full copy, you have everything, you have everything here, but you don't have.
But where, where is that case of two-point-five million that you think this increases?
Set in a motion.
Here, what I did is, the current money, money rate, this one, this one, this one.
We load it down, get on work.
So that's.
Oh, this.
Well, that's one too.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the raises were six, six hundred and forty-seven.
I misunderstood.
And ninety-two dollars, I took the raises here, which would be like five thousand, this one here, this one here, and this one here, that was on one page. These guys didn't get a raise, so they didn't, they weren't. Then I went over.
Just a few times for a five-minute break, if you guys wanna keep on.
Yeah, that sounds good.
This one here, and this one here.
Say words, John.
This is absolutely.
And that's, I did.
Let me trace one of them.
Nobody, seconds.
Nobody else will die.
Yeah.
And we'll go on.
Yep.
Then what I did, what I did, first I did how much the raises were gonna be, how much were they were already making, what they would be making, so the last part of it would have been this, 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 this. And then, I think then, that's what I said, take, I, I was just so you guys go through the figures. And this is seventy-one thousand, seven hundred, and they were forty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-two and eighty cents, they went to fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Here, they were at thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty, they're gonna go to forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Here is where, I wanted to get some of the bigger ones, where it really added up was, where it ended up was here, it, it was really on the courts, because they were, they jumped up eleven thousand, eleven, ten thousand, nine thousand. Here's the beginning of the eight thousand one. Eight thousand. Thirteen thousand. You start doing it, anytime you get to over ten thousand, it's gonna add up real quick. You have the same numbers?
I have the same input numbers, but you, you're hand keying under this calculations where I'm automatically being, I trust by automation.
Yeah, well, let's see, you pick out one.
It's not, that's not the issue, the totals are the issue.
This is how I did it, let me show you.
I, I see exactly where you did it.
Went forty-two, anyway seventeen.
But the way that I calculated virtually has zero error, and that's what I'm saying.
We'll show you, turn it on. Two seventy-nine. You've got all these numbers, I can't figure out why it would be different, because I added, I've added everything that's on there. If these are all right, if you're getting all the same numbers.
I am not getting those, I mean, I'm not getting any numbers somewhere.
Well, I should, three, six, six, seven, zero, add forty cents, and add fifty-eight, oh, three, point thirty-two, four, right here. I mean, it's, I add these two, and they get this, and these two get this, I've doubled and tripled these, I mean, checked it. So now that I've got all these, there are any of these off.
You know, I'm telling you, Microsoft Excel says that when you add up the raises, it's four hundred and eighty-four thousand now.
That's why I brought the center, so you tell me where there's a mistake now, if these all add up, I'm gonna look at this. And I had to go down and add them up, what I did is I added them up by page, so right here, this was the raise, this was, this would be, uh, this is what it calculated to be.
Moving on.
This is what it would be, you ended it off.
I apologize, Jan, I, I don't use cassette tapes anymore, and I don't use any machines, I, I, I use the automated.
Well, what I will do is, is I will take those to my CPA.
Bring them, the electronic version of this too. Yes.
Okay, we're done from our break, we had a motion to.
What I'm going to do is take this to my CPA, 'cause I have one, and have, I'll take Chris's papers, I'll take my papers and see where there's a mistake. Because he's got the same numbers that I've done here on his, it's just when you tally them up, it's different.
Add up significantly different.
Okay, we have a motion to put this up for a week, is there any support?
Would be to the next meeting.
The next meeting. One second, motion dies.
I will still take my account, I'll still bring it back on the next meeting, so you know.
Well, I don't like these big raises either, but, uh, we hired this company to do the study for the comparable areas, and I'm gonna sleep just fine if I get the employees of Gracia County up where they should be, where they should have been for years.
And I guess the solitude I have, I feel the same way, I, I, and, and Jan, I, I respect that, but no one that I, I, I'm married to a retired teacher now, no one goes into, and I can speak from experience, 'cause I'm a retired police officer, you do not become a cop to get rich quick. It's a calling, teaching is a calling. Anybody who's going into teaching knows, they are not going to make the same amount of money that you can make in many, many, many other professions, but it's a calling that they want to do. Tim, you were a teacher for your entire career, you were called to do it.
Well, there, there are probably several reasons I went into teaching, uh, summers off and policies.
I rest my case.
Like that, but you did get a pay raise, every year you were vested, after, I don't know, ten years, so they couldn't really fire you, they could make conditions bad enough so you'd wanna quit.
Exactly.
Uh, Jay and I respectively disagree with your figures on teaching. Teachers make more money than what you say.
Can I ask how much you paid, you made?
Well, when I left Wesaco, Texas, after eighteen years, I made probably about fifty thousand. I started at eighteen thousand, got a raise every year. Now, job satisfaction is very important. Half of the young people out of college that go into teaching, leave the profession within five years, pay is not the number one reason. Te- teaching is a hard job. And you're judged, uh, if you, in a secondary level, you might have a hundred and fifty kids, you're, you're judged, those kids have an opinion, and they have other teachers to compare. So you, you are judged with, it's, it's not an easy job, and if you're an elementary school teacher, you got the same kids all day, with a lot of props, and, uh, they have issues, and you have parents, and it, it's not an easy job.
How many years did you do it out in Texas?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years?
So I, I disagree with you on, um, I, I, I think, uh, I, I was paid enough, I, I wasn't, I don't think I was overpaid, but I, you know, I, I knew what I was getting into, and, uh, teaching is, at the time, a lot better than, like, minimum wage is, Michigan is ten dollars and ten cents, well, nobody.
Thirty-three.
Uh, nobody pays that, you, you couldn't get workers now with the job.
Yes.
Or could wait.
I guess ten dollars and thirty-three cents.
Yeah, well, they're, they're lucky to get you, Jan, but, but teachers make a lot more money than what you said, a lot more.
Well, I'm telling you where I was at, I was at one of the schools, and I asked, I've asked several of the teachers now, just recently, um, and they've told me, now, that, they, now, they made fourteen, fourteen thousand was. And they've told me, no, they, now they made fourteen, fourteen ton was one of them, she told me the other day. Another one told me that sixteen something, but. And then, and they've been there for a long time. So, I don't know, I'm just telling you, but it is elementary and they.
Teacher, I know, never got paid by the hour.
No, you don't get paid by the hour.
Because you work a lot more hours than what, yeah.
It's salary.
Oh, no, you just, you get, you're on salary.
It's salary, yeah.
Well, well.
Jan, there. There's a different subject, there, there's wealth in Gracia County. There's nice homes in Alma, there's nice homes in St. Louis, there's wealth out there, there's opportunity out there. And our. Job is to represent those people and. Not stand in their way, but. You know, I'm for this increase, but you gotta keep in mind that. You know, people that didn't get a lot of the increases might be a little bitter. We certainly don't wanna lose any deputies. So we don't wanna do that. But we. We've got a good county here, we've got good workers here.
I agree with you.
People are like Steve, they. They go to a neighboring county with three dollars and seventy nine cents a gallon, they probably figured out, well, I'm ahead a little bit.
But most, don't you think most husbands and wives, most men do work out of the county? Did your wife make good money when she was a schoolteacher?
She made very good money for many years until I got promoted, my, I was one of the proud husbands that said. I had a sugar mill, she made more money than I did because I went to be a cop. And I left this county to make more money and I still didn't make as much money as my wife, but she had finished her master's degree. Plus some credits, which all equates out to how much her salary was. And my wife made a very good living and my wife has a wonderful retirement. And she has wonderful benefits, way better than the benefits that I get, so guess what? My health insurance, now that I'm retired, comes through my wife. And I gladly pay that small amount to the state of Michigan for that insurance versus paying a much, much, much larger amount. For me to have insurance from where I worked.
We're just surprised that she kept you all these years.
As am I. If she's watching, I love it. Anyhow, so. Personally, I think we've discussed this enough. There are numbers on here that. Are. Staggering, but the only way they got that way. Is by lack of action and doing the right thing. As far as legacy, that concerns me, but I also. Have looked back at what Keegan gave us on the five-year outlook. There wasn't data for ten. I take what I hear in these meetings that were, the people are interested in the retooling or repowering, whatever you wanna say. To the wind turbines that we are starting to age out, we've got new ones that just came on board. So personally, I think Gracia County's values are going to remain. At a, at a, at a level that's going to allow us to. Continue to, to pay our staff. They're gonna continue at a rate that's gonna allow us to continue with the services that we provide, because that's what we are, we are service. The county is a, we, we're the government, we, we provide services, that's what we do. The most expensive thing we do, and George said, as long as we keep it under sixty five percent, Chris came back with the numbers, it's sixty one point something. If I remember isn't that right? Even after these raises, correct?
Right.
So we're well within that, the most important thing we have as the county board of commissioners are the people who work for us. And the most important, and those people cost money. It, it costs money to provide all these services to the people that we provide. And that's just. Hard facts, most of our tax money that comes into the county, we're not looking at raising. I mean, we have to decide that at the next mid-May, don't we, we have to decide what our miller grade is going to be and I've heard zero talk about raising it.
No, we don't need to do that.
Exactly.
We haven't done it and I can't tell you when.
Years, so. That, that is all this stuff, when I said I've spent time looking, talking. Consulting with other people that I know that are commissioners in other counties. I've taken this very, very, very seriously. But I, in part, I feel like we need to right a wrong. Yep, and it's gonna cost the, the, the general fund three hundred and thirty one thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty cents. This year, that's gonna, that's gonna cost us that much. And guess what? Chris is gonna be coming to us with contracts here in our short order, it's gonna, they're gonna be, the unions are gonna be looking for raises because. This is twenty twenty-two numbers and we're negotiating contracts for twenty-five and twenty-six, so. With all that, I so moved, we accept the wage compensation study that was provided to us. For the employees of Gracia County.
I'll support that.
Effective.
Effective for the May, when our first pay period in May, is that, is that doable at this?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's the twenty. No, sixteenth of April, is that?
We, we got plenty of time.
Okay, that's, I wanna make sure that it's, it's a doable thing, I don't wanna. Put this into a tailspin.
No problem.
Effective first pay period in May.
And making a budget amendment of three hundred and thirty one, three thirty six.
And amend our budget, the, and the general fund budget, three thirty one, three thirty six, sixty.
We are halfway through the fiscal year, so it would be half of that.
Okay. So whatever.
But we would need to do the entire, not just the general fund, we would need to amend all of them.
Yes, so we need to, do, do you need the total fund because that's the Commission on Aging in Parks ones as well, correct?
So. I, I think a prop, the easiest proper way to do this would be to amend. The salary line items that these.
With a budget amendment of salary line items.
So with a budget for funds for salary line items as presented. And Mr. Chairman, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely.
Had a motion to approve and implement the wage study effective May the first. A roll call vote.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting. Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do you want?
Move on.
If not.
Be happy to meet. Is that conclude our, our regular meeting?
A motion they're going to finance.
And I'll support that, Tim.
See everybody.
We did all the hard work and now everybody's late. Thank you.
To all your employees. Tell them thank you for the work they do for us.
Negotiations, we are not.
All the population of this county.
Was told he went up nineteen and a half or something.
Oh, she's not with us, so.
St. Louis finished there. St. Louis did. Yeah, St. Louis. I'm sorry, I got you mixed up. Oh, you haven't.
We're not do it, we have.
Negotiate, okay. Do you need anything tonight or no?
Just came to stop.
Okay.
All right, take care, be safe. It does. Well, you must have airport tomorrow or? It's like, cause I got parks and rec, I'm like, no, no. We got, we got airport. And then there was one.
By Tim, supported by George to go into the finance meeting.
Yes.
All right, everybody take deep breaths and here we go.
You gave me two minutes to get my stuff together here.
Certainly, I'll give you all the time you want.
I never seen that, you can clear out like that before.
Yeah, what do you do?
I wonder why you weren't here.
Fifty two, fifty. Okay, I think I'm all set now.
Okay.
Let me just.
Go ahead, Chris, with the financial report.
Okay, so we have not had any drain prepayments in the last month. Give those to you for approval so far in fiscal year, which we are fifty percent of the way through, we're at forty one thousand dollars.
Gee, I don't know, what's going on? So we're coming out of the winter time too, but.
Yeah.
We've had six months, so.
It, it's, we're, we're getting into digging season.
Yeah.
And I think. Three or four, three, three or four years ago, Bernie really focused on. Doing, digging new drains, he, he. Addressed petitions that were coming in and since then, he's really been focusing on maintenance.
Yeah.
So, he's, but I know he's been, I think he's been, you know, clearing out a lot, make sure these are.
Some good advice.
Oh, now he's focusing on cleaning.
Good. Good.
That's not to say that tomorrow we might see something, because I don't enter.
Hope not, I'll be down there on a daily basis, but.
ARP funds the last month has been very slow as far as distribution. But we have had a lot of projects that have made significant progress. The first one you guys are probably well aware of is downtown Ithaca, they're replacing some lead pipes. That was part of a project that was approved, so we'll be seeing some reimbursement requests from them. You mentioned Hamilton. Town Hall, that was ARP project, so we may start seeing some draws from them here once.
Yeah, they were talking about. Odepe, I think what their first draws are gonna be probably to the lumber company down in St. John's.
Since that, since we have, we have gotten the bills for the road commission generator. I had a chance to talk to Matt Buck about that, he's ecstatic. They had their first. Well, they had a problem getting billed for it, it was installed for a significantly long time and then they got billed later. But when we lost power here at the courthouse the last time or two, they had the generator. And it's the first time that they didn't actually lose power, so they were all able to stay and work and they.
That's cool.
And. I think that's the update for ARP, I have asked my staff to start reconciling the county projects to make sure that we know what money we have set aside for ourselves. To make sure that we will have plans and appropriately spend it. Also, something that we will need to talk about in the future, very near future. Is I think we have accumulated close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest. In our ARP account, if you'll recall, the interest in ARP is not restricted. We could simply transfer that to the general fund, we could, if something comes up. I, I do have a few things that people have approached me on that I may talk to you about too, that would be good use for that. Things that are near and dear to your heart. So that would be our ARP, as far as our MERS OPEB. We saw an appreciation over the last month, we're now up three point one percent on the calendar year compared to eight point six on the S and P. Very happy to no longer have the audit section in my. Director's report. With no questions, I'd like to move on to our cash balances. So for March. You will see from February to March, our general fund went from seven point eight million to seven point three, that is normal course of business. Our influxes between February and March are usually minimal. The next influx that we'll see within our general fund would be related to settlement, which Terry can address settlement coming up soon. I'm sure, I know that some townships have reached out about settlement, when that'll be, Terry would be happy to answer that, but that's typically in the next month. Or, or I shouldn't even say the next month, April, May-ish, so, ish, when available. I will not speak for you, hold on. COVID funds, minimal dip related to what I said, we didn't have a whole lot going on over the last month. And then our delinquent tax fund. Without questions on our cash balances, I will allow you to review some AP.
I have a question here.
Sure.
The delinquent tax fund, is that, do we have one or is that the one that's in the treasurer's office?
Well, I. I, I can, Gracia County has a delinquent tax fund, yes, but it, it is maintained by the treasurer.
Oh, that's what I wanted to.
How is the, most of you busy working on the wage compensation study this last weekend, I didn't get very many requests about bills, so if you have anything you would like explained.
Happy to do that. O R E engineers and surveyors. Four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
They work for the drain commissioner, they. When we have, when, when we work on drains, we're required to have an engineering firm draw up the specs for it.
If there's not.
The number one site development, thirty one thousand.
That'd be to the drain commissioner also.
They control the water.
Well, they, it, it's an attempt. In Gracia County, it's tough.
Yes.
Cause it's so flat, it's tough to control the water. Just wants to lay there. Times it doesn't wanna move very fast.
Oh, everybody left. But Terry.
We done, any, any other questions with the check register?
Yeah. Jerry. We go over the expenditure report?
No, I.
Did you jump?
I did not, but if, if has any questions on the revenue, it's not your report.
Okay.
We don't, then you go ahead with her. Investment, sorry.
I know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Ready, okay. Good evening. Everything, there's not really much to report on my end, everything is running along as exactly as it has been for the past few months. Things are going in the right direction. You have those reports in front of you? Has anybody seen anything that they have any questions on?
No, and we talked before, you're gonna bring a, we started doing our. Class and all that other, in May last year, right?
Yes.
So you can bring a report for the, your total. For that.
I'm keeping track of the totals and, yep.
You can tell us next month what we got in the year.
Yep.
That'd be kinda interesting to know, because I haven't been actually keeping track.
Yep.
But I have.
Yep, a running total.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be good to know.
Yes. And. As far as settlement goes, Chris brought that up, I plan to start cutting settlement checks next week.
I could.
But.
What about those? It goes back to the township and the cities. They get, they get paid. They get paid for, yeah, go ahead.
This time each year, everything that the townships and cities are delinquent, like the people that haven't paid their taxes. I make those townships and cities whole, so that they can operate. And then that's why I take delinquent taxes, because I pay them and then I, I take the money from the people at that point in time.
You get all the interest. The county does.
Statute, I statute.
That's the statute, there's no. It's not a Gracia County thing, that's a state statute.
State statute.
Terry asked a question for you, I see there's a lot of people going out of business, if they don't pay their taxes, how do you collect from them? If they go, they say they rent a place.
Will it be a property?
They go and they rent it and they have to pay a personal property tax. And, and they don't pay it to you, what happens?
We don't collect personal property, just, that goes to the townships and the cities.
No.
Yes.
It goes to the city.
And the townships. We get the county portion, but none of the rest of it, we don't collect personal property tax, we only collect real.
So what happens, I wonder if, I should ask that question to the cities then? So what happens? I wonder if, I should ask that question to the cities then. I just wondered about it.
We would collect tax on the building that the landlord would.
Yeah, the owner of the building or owner of the property, real property.
That's real property.
So you do.
Personal properties, the, the contents.
Contents and, yep.
Equipment, all that stuff. That's.
So, so you have like Walmarts, and they have a lot of stuff in there.
They don't get charged anymore. They took that off the books. They don't have personal property.
Correct.
And none of, nobody has it anymore?
They're dark.
I didn't know that.
So, yeah, if they don't pay their taxes, then they go into the foreclosure process, but that's.
If you have a business now, you don't, you don't have to worry about the personal property tax. You just move in and, and.
Yeah, for the, for the most, there's a few items, but they're few and far between, and I can't tell you what they are, but there's a few left on that, but not a lot.
I see there's a lot of businesses going out, a lot. And by the way, you guys, Mexican restaurant, they are done at the end of this month. I'm over it here.
I don't know. Which one? There's a couple of them.
The one-way street.
Oh, uh, no, by the old, yeah, that's middle.
What is that?
It is Arcado, is it?
Alva Car, there you go. Alva Carroll, Alva Carroll is struggling.
They have sold it. And somebody else.
Their son didn't want to come back and run it.
Oh, no, he's, no, he's going to go to work at the bank, one of the banks, maybe. They, he's been offered, he says he'd like to do that, and they've offered him at two different banks, so I wish him the best.
That's a Mexican restaurant.
On Center Street.
Used to be the laundry van.
Yeah, laundry.
Yeah, Washington.
Yeah.
Wonderful food. You guys, they, everything is thought of.
I could, but, but I think the Cancun kind of run them out of business.
Yeah.
I think this is.
They're located down where they are.
Are they open on Sundays, Cancun?
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, they are.
Tim, you spoke that with authority. You spend there on a Sunday.
Does anybody have any further questions?
Thank you, thank you. And with that, I would make a motion, we go back to the regular session meeting with the purpose of paying the bills. By George, supported by Tim, go back into the regular meeting and pay the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Pay the bills. Hey.
We, we can help the schools.
I make a motion that we. By George, supported by Tim, that we have shared that six forty-five.